Hi, everyone. Welcome to the San Mateo Foster City School District. Tonight's a board study session. It's November 7th, 2024, and I'm calling to meet you to order at 5:30 PM. Let's start with the flag salute, please. Budge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll go to item three, which is roll call. Trusty Kim? Trusty Trin here. Trusty Brooks? Oh, you're muted.
Here.
Yeah, I'm here as well. Item four is approval of the agenda for tonight. Motion to approve.
Second.
You, Trusty Trin, for the motion, and Trusty Kim for the second. All in favor? Actually, we'll do roll call since Trusty Brooks is on Zoom. So, Trusty Brooks?
Yes.
Trusty Kim?
Yes.
Trusty Trin? Yes, and I vote yes as well. Okay, item five are public statements related to agenda items. Please limit statements to three minutes. So we'll do some public comment now, and then we'll check in again through at some other point later, so. Can we check with Zoom if there's any public comment?
No public comments at this time.
Okay, item six, a school climate update.
All right.
Thank you.
Good evening, good afternoon. Dr. Margarita Ria, Director of Student Services.
Yeah, Dr. Cassandra Agawa, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services.
Yeah, so we were here not that long ago. Here we are again. So we're going to start with the school climate report. Again, our goals of student services, we're really focused today on school culture, restorative practices, mental health, and student voice will be some of the factors for us today. Our wellness team. So we have Dr. Rubika and myself that work with student services and wellness, and two coordinators. We have our district social workers and district mental health clinicians. We have 22 community service specialists that really work on building those connections with our families at the site, and then we also have them at the district level. We have our principals, assistant principals, counselors, 29 LGBTQ+, teacher on special assignment, six restorative justice teachers, and then five student support teachers. This is real. This is one of, at Burrell, we have restorative practices really has been the focus on supporting our families and our students, on building those connections, and also on the healing process when harm happens and conflicts happen. This is a session, and you see that beautiful photo, and just the students working with one of our restorative justice teachers. So our embracing restorative practices is really our opportunity to shift up the mindset, right? From change of event, right, to the process. Really looking at punishment as what do we get out of it versus how do we repair the harm? How do we restore? Going from the individual orientation to the community, because we know that it goes beyond. When there's harm, it goes into our community, into our families. The judgment and shame, again, that's something that kids will start at a very young age feeling it, and we want them to be kind of the curiosity and the vulnerability, and also what are some of the root causes? Assumption that it was their choice. Did they cause harm because if they just wanted to versus what's trauma and foreign practices? How does that help us? And then a quick analysis of our students versus the deep learning opening of the book, getting to know more of who they are. This is one of our students and one of our staff members, beautiful little daughters there, and thinking about restorative practices that if the child doesn't know how to read, what do we do? We teach. If a child doesn't know how to swim, we teach. If a child doesn't know how to do multiplication, right, we teach. They don't want to drive, parents, that's at a higher level. We teach, right? Some of you might be there soon.
Yeah.
If a child doesn't know how to behave, do we teach or do we punish? And that's where we want to think about that kind of pause. And our traditional way is to punish, and so we're embracing the teaching. Some of the effects of punishment, and I think we're going, we're really sharing a lot about the effects because we're doing ourselves, like how does that support our students? So it creates a false accountability, not a true accountability toward the harmed person. So it also works both ways. Person's causing the harm is unable to blame the punisher instead of kind of taking the ownership and working together to resolve these pieces. Takes the focus away from the harm being done towards resentment and fear of the punisher. From resentment grows frustration, which can take out, you know, on other classmates. And then we don't really unpack the root cause of the conflict, like why? Why are they causing the harm? And then, again, it's a systematic disease of left to grow, and it hurts people. Our teams, we have kind of a tiered approach, and so tier one, tier two, we have our counselors and our RJ TOSAs, student support TOSAs, LGBTQ+. And then we have tier two plus three is our mental health team at the district level that they support a complex. And so we have a social worker for two complexes, and then we have two mental health clinicians for each complex. And they're dispatched, but they also do weekly check-ins, and they're visible and engaged in their sites. We had a program specialist that really was focused on attendance. And then you have Dr. Rubika and myself that respond to everything. Again, just kind of the sum of the work, and I know we just met last week, so one of the pieces that we'll bring to you is some data on some of these practices. But some of the practices that we are doing is the mediations, the restorative circles. And again, those are circles that are, could be a welcoming circle, it could be an academic circle, it could be a healing circle, so there's a whole variety in which our staff at the elementary and middle school are being trained. And then there's community circles, again, a lot of them, they're for fun, they're for bringing joy, and you can do them in your staff meetings, you can do them in the classrooms. We can do them here, so they're there to kind of bring some fun. And then restorative conversations. And they're, again, helping us to resolve the conflicts. The mediations are more of a formal process, and so you can look, they both are conversations between students, two or more, and they're actually more structured, and there's like a particular outcome that we want. With a restorative conversation, they're more informal, and it's really to help kids like think about what are some of those root causes, and they may lead to non-closure on some of it, but it's just beginning those conversations, and so, and us training our staff to do it, so it's not just our restorative justice folks. Oh, I want to go back if I can. We do have our toupee, and I just want to talk about like kids' baby, so I was just thinking about that. And the other piece is the accountability projects that we do. So when students are creating or identify a harm, one of the outcomes could be like, how do you repair that? And so we get them to think about what are some possible projects that help them grow and not punished, but give them an enlightenment on why that harm was caused, or how they can support their community in healing from something. And we also use them with, you know, if they created, for example, we had a 911 student that pulled 911 last year, a variety of times. Like, and so as one of the accountability projects, we brought in the family, San Mateo PD and myself, and they did a study. And they looked at like the possibilities of someone who really needed to get service, 911, but wasn't, and so they did a whole search, they did a presentation, and it was like full circle, they were like, wow, we didn't realize this. So it was really great for kids to get that experience.
And I think what's key about this piece on having kids doing the accountability projects is that one of the big pieces is it's the education component, right? Because they're compelled to look into different, you know, kind of ideas around what they've done and the harm that it can cause on others. So it puts, it positions them into like the adult role of like, oh, how can I solve this or prevent something like this? And number two, it gives them that student voice and that student leadership, because oftentimes they become really like inspired to do something about it, or
Yeah, it's like a public service act.
It changes them completely, yeah.
Yeah, so it's really, it's an opportunity for them, and they also are guided with our TOSAs, work with them. So it could be our restorative justice TOSA or student support TOSA, actually work with them, check in with them on the project. So that's also that personal connection really makes a difference. This is some of the feedback that we actually received from our last training. Dr. Rubika, would you like to kind of read some of that to our team?
So we kind of picked out some like key quotes that really came from this. It really shows like not only the inherent buy-in with restorative practices, but just their like their appetite for like digging deeper and wanting to do more. Like the first one, it says, you know, I've been using restorative practices for a few years, and now I feel like we need next steps or more restorative activities. So like they have this appetite to go deeper, to try different, you know, practices, to do different things, not just in isolation, like in their own classes, but like in collaboration with the department at the middle school or with like their grade level at the elementary school. Another quote that stands out, right, I mean, they all do. "I learned so many more new layers of information about restorative practices that helped me further change my mindset so that I can have a safe, loving, and inclusive classroom." This one really hits on the mindset piece. I mean, this is like
On inclusive classroom too, right? And again, these are teachers, like we didn't say write anything for us, this was the feedback because we do survey data.
Yeah.
So this was their feedback, and elementary school had the first like taste of restorative training on October 4th, and they asked, hey, what are you going to do? So just kind of middle school, I mean, they're also, you know, thankful, so it's just folks are embracing and they're wanting a little more too.
Restorative I'm sorry, can I quickly jump in? I just have a quick question. First, I want to thank you because the reformed relationship with the the law enforcement is really showing how we are being intentional about maximizing the help that we provide our students. And I see that you shared some great feedback from some of the teachers. Are there, but nothing is 100%. Are there any that you can share who has kind of pushed back from this style of helping our students?
So I don't have, we do have the actual percentages on like what their response was for the overall, and overall, we were in the high 80s for how folks were receiving it, and you're always going to have some pushback. And that's also about us unpacking like what's lagging as far as our training, what's lagging about our communication, or just early adopters versus late adopters. And I think it's okay that we're, we know that this work is personal, and we know that it takes time, and sometimes it's even our own healing and our own experiences. And we've all, I'm sure, in this group have a lot of traditional responses to school and punishment. And it is a shift, right? It is a shift to understand that how do we build our future citizens? Do we want them to feel that they should heal situations and repair the harm? Or do we want to feel like, you know, this is the punishment, and that's it? So in the department, so we can get, actually, I can give you more, but it was in the high 80s is what I could share as far as that.
Very strong. I was curious in that as well. What else? When do we have the same information for like parents or community in terms of their perceptions?
So that would be a next step for us as well as, and when we get, oh, maybe I was doing more of a less, I should do less presenting, I'm sorry. I was, yeah, so one of our next steps is to really think about our families and how do we share this, like that we're doing these practices and what does it mean? And how can students and families maybe practice some of that at home? We are doing a parent education in December. We're working on that with one of our middle schools, but we need to like think about it, like how do we do it? And bigger so that parents know. That's a work in progress at this time, but it's one that we know that we want to engage in deeply as well.
Thank you for that, because I know that my experience growing up, I wish this, these practices were in place and that we had access to these resources that we are and have implemented throughout our district. It's just, it's very rewarding to see what's happening. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for pausing me, because I was just going through. Yeah, so at the site, so we have like a district group, right? And then we have at the middle schools, who's at the table for students and who's leading the work? Again, every middle school has a restorative justice TOSA. We also have student support TOSAs that also did the training. So it's the trainer, the training that we're doing. In addition, recently, as I shared, we did a six-day intense training. And I was, had the privilege to co-facilitate and also participate in that training with assistant principals and middle school principals, but some of the middle school principals could only be there for a few days because they didn't want to leave their campus for six days, obviously. But we also had Fiesta Gardens, and we had the Laurel principal and RJ TOSA, because they're our pilot elementary schools. And Fiesta Gardens was there for the entire six days. So kind of learning, it's a mind shift in how we like think about discipline, and how do we think about school climate, and how do we build capacity? Not on here, we started school climate walkthroughs, and Bowditch was our first school that we went through. That was last week, and we took all the assistant principals, and then RJ TOSA and student support TOSA kind of led it. And we had them, we have a rubric that we've developed, and then we just had them pick two of those strands, and we went through and gave them some feedback, and it was really, a really great, and the community felt great. But just to see it in action, some of them were academic, some of them were actually newcomers doing a get-to-know-you circle, so it was really very touching. So again, restorative practice training. It requires us to, like, we're doing a lot of, a lot of learning. We had training in August, October, 4th. We're also doing a classified staff. We are planning November 13th, where we're going to be doing a 90-minute workshop that I'll be co-facilitating and I'm curating with our consultants so that our classified staff can also think about the language, right, that we're using. But we need to give them that as well and give them some of the strategies. Our progressive disciplinary intervention matrix, I just put it there, it's a living document. It was a tool that I worked with our teams, principals, to kind of calibrate when I first came here, because we saw that we were doing all sorts of different responses for the same incident. And so this is a tool, it's an offering to calibrate, like how do, what should be the response? Should we engage police? What should we do? How should we do it? And then they always can consult with Dr. Rubika or myself.
Yeah, may I say something about that too? I think what's also important is that as a department and along with our superintendent, we're constantly calibrating, right? Because, you know, we don't just hand out, handouts, right? And just leave them, it's that continuous dialogue, because sometimes they have a lens or they come across very unique situations, and we look at it through the equity lens while at the same time trying to standardize it, because, you know, as we know, part of dismantling the scooter prison pipeline, right, is having systems in place that take down those barriers of, you know, over-suspension or, you know, and things like that. So that's, you know, like it says, it's a living document because it continues to evolve and get updated to reflect the current atmosphere, right, the current situation that come across our table.
It's also empowering as an administrator, if you think, you know, if you're a lawyer, right, we can go refer to our laws.
Yeah.
If you're a baker, you can go to your recipes. It's just a tool, and it's a tool that sometimes you're like, well, what is this?
Yeah.
You know, what is, and is this a mandatory? And sometimes if you don't have discipline and you're an elementary principal, and something does require you to, it is a must, it is a must suspend, right? Must recommend, and it's good to have this as your tool to go back and make reference. But folks, they do have me on standby as far as calls, and they consult with us. Now we're going to look at some discipline, and you have, you have it there. It's a lot of, if you look at it, it's like, whoa, there's so much. I wanted us to look at a five-year, you know, scope of what our discipline is looked like. And here we have Abbott. You look at the bottom, and you can see like, why do they have more lines entered in one year versus another? And that's because of the infractions. So when they enter these infractions, you're going to have a greater number of them if they enter a greater number. And I'm going to just focus for our discussion on the totals. So if we go back to August of 2018, we can look at their discipline. There were about total infractions that they memorialized were about 28. And then pre-COVID, they were at 134. And I'm, you know, you have them right there for you to review. Then here we go, and we look at, there's been after, I'm going to try to move this out of my way here, okay? We have 2022, they're at 21. And 23, they're at 23, and then currently they're at 16. And so that's a big shift in how we're responding and how we're calibrating as an Abbott middle school team. Now we're going to look at Bayside. Again, we have the 2018, then we have, they were at nine, and we have pre-COVID, they were at 25. Then they were 22, they were at 25. 23, they were at 17, and currently they're at 24. I also want, wanted to look at some of the infractions that were there. They've been able to remove some of them because they're also working yonder. This is not here, but yonder, middle school principals, I just met with them, we met with them.
This is huge.
They're like, it has changed. It's changed bullying, cyberbullying, capturing the fights, just it's changed, and kids are more engaged. So that's been a big, big piece too. Burrell, they're at 120. And 2018, total, 2019, there were 143. Then they went down to 38, 28, and now 11. This is also a team that has had a admin, AP, and the TOSA, they've been the same team now for year four. And so it really does help to have that same consistency, the team growing, calibrating, and they're great to work with. They all are, but I'm just saying. Bowditch. So we can see some of their data here. And pre-COVID is so interesting to see that the pre-COVID, everyone was like, it was exploding for some reason. So I'm not sure the why behind it, but it was definitely, it was, they stand out. And currently, they're at 10, Bowditch. So they've really been working hard. And if you see some of the stuff, it's kind of serious offenses that they've been responding to. I'm just going to keep going unless, okay, and we can always go back and have discussions. So we continue with supporting folks with risk assessments, low risk. Okay, low-risk assessments and mid, high, and so sometimes it's our 50s and 50s, and how do we respond, and how do we provide support? So we have our team working on that. Anonymous Alerts is another platform that we've had, this is our third year, and it's been really a great tool for us. Students using, parents using, community have also reported. Immediately, we can respond and try to remove situations from escalating. Yeah, so let's, did you want to, are you?
Oh, my God.
Okay, so we're going to keep going, just jump in when you're wanting to jump in, because.
Yeah, so the CHICS survey, as we know, is administered every year. It's the survey that all of our stakeholders take, staff, students, and families. And the timeline for 2025 is, you know, in early February, we will have a period of time where we will administer it with all of our sites and stakeholders. And it really gives us, you know, an opportunity to look at a snapshot at different categories around who connectedness, you know, how they feel about incidents such as like bullying. So it's very specific and concrete data items that really help us and gives us information on how to create goals and how to push forward to improve the data. And this is kind of the timeline, and obviously, you know, as we do the rollout, we prepare really heavily. We receive, you know, the links to the surveys, and then we meet with our, with our site administrators, and it's kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach and support, you know, we get support from teachers as well to launch these surveys that provide us with a lot of rich information. And of course, you can expect an update afterward, right, in early spring, where we can, we'll, we'll share like the results and the trends, right, and kind of where we improved and where are some opportunities and things like that.
We're also going to add just specifically to the restorative justice work, we're going to look, because they have modules.
Yeah.
So we want to pull in some of that to kind of verify what students are feeling, families. And hopefully, we'll get out the family education piece so that they can respond like, hey, I know about it. Oh, slide, okay.
Yeah, so along the lines of, you know, supporting students and ensuring that they have all of the supports from our department and just across the district, we do have a high impact, high focus on mental health and wellness. We've got counseling supports at each campus. We've got alternative learning placement in situations that require that. You know, we attempt at every opportunity to offer spaces for kiddos, no matter, you know, where they're at and what their needs might be. We, of course, as we've been, as Dr. Ria has been sharing throughout the presentation, we have restorative practices, right? And we're constantly looking to provide professional development on these, and not just like a sitting yet. I think, you know, hopefully, we've, you know, we've been able to capture the idea that we loop back around and we do, you know, walks across our district and schools and get into classrooms and, you know, and calibrate and have those dialogues with staff, so that's not just like a sitting yet, you know? We've got peace rooms, wellness centers, and district social workers and mental health clinicians who are just so passionate about the work, so skillful and so dedicated, and you know, they collaborate with us to ensure that we can address needs as they come up in a very nurturing manner. These are some strategies that we have continued to implement across our sites. We've got second step SEL curriculum with very specific lessons and objectives, giving students an opportunity to role model, to kind of dive into visuals and narratives and picture narratives that really hone in on SEL components. And it allows the students and staff to have that ongoing dialogue and conversation. We've got the SARD and SARD intervention, the care team, the care team is super important because they, essentially, it's like, it's, every site has a care team that is assembled to bring in situations and bring in interventions so that we can support students in a variety of ways, whether it's academic, behavior. Maybe they need to tap into some social resources across our community, that care team is there to identify those needs. And it does bring a group of committed Um, and it does bring a a group of committed educators uh at the site who have kind of have a different lens, one might be like a social worker, another a counselor. You know, the administrator, maybe a teacher or teacher's special assignment, they come together and really do some really key data-driven work. We've got crisis response, student support, as we mentioned earlier, RJ TOSAs um at each middle school. We do have two of them at the elementary sites, as you know, we're trying to kind of pilot it and what might that look like at the site, uh at the elementary site level? Uh, counseling help, mental health clinicians uh at our sites. So there isn't a site that cannot tap into um uh mental health uh clinician support or counselor support. Uh, of course, we've got our professional development on our restorative practices, yonder patches, which we cannot you kind of speak more highly of it because we're just really, we're seeing the results. Um, and it's actually just been just so inspiring to to see you know, the kids really connected to the learning and connected to their projects and and connected to one another, that's really, it's about the human connection. Anonymous Alerts is also one of our uh high-impact um systems that we have in place that allows us to investigate before things, you know, kind of go awry or uh it really allows us to to get in there and provide those supports immediately uh in anti-bullying campaigns uh that throughout the year. So wellness centers and peace rooms, right, uh so here we kind of lay out um how many, right, we've got wellness centers at Burrell, Bowditch and Fiesta, peace rooms at Burrell, Abbott, Bayside, Bowditch and Fiesta. Um, who facilitates each room? Uh, the way we've kind of structured this uh is that uh our wellness centers are run um by social workers, mental health clinicians, counselors um and and our care team members uh who come together to bring life to to our wellness centers. Peace rooms, um, we have our sort of justice TOSA, our social workers um uh who who really do a lot of the work on, you know, on on bringing peace and giving students an opportunity to to come together and in in peaceful unions and and conversations. Um, how are students welcomed, right? Um, you know, every site has their different kind of players, right, their different flavors, right, on how they bring that alive. Um, it's just really interesting, we, you know, you know, Bayside's got like the bracelet making, board games, puzzles, socializing. Um, Fiesta, you know, will welcome uh kiddos by grade level uh as they request, you know, for check-ins. Bowditch has um information and resources um for each room that is shared through the broadcasting station, so they kind of link it through through that. Um, and they got storytelling, uh so on and so forth. Uh, Abbott, right, students are welcomed with quick check-ins to support their needs and Burrell uses a peace room as a space for restorative activities uh to help kids reset and kind of re-energize. Um, we cannot, right, end this presentation without talking about the importance of parents and the community. Um, because this what, this is what truly brings uh all pieces together, it's like the glue, right? It's uh, we we really want to hone in on on the family component, which is so important. So uh we, in on in September nineteenth, we held, our district held like a parent education on Bates and Moore and we partnered um with our local uh, you know, police department who who really came and locked forces with us and uh really, you know, helped us disseminate information, educate families and and do it in a nurturing and welcoming manner uh where it's, you know, by no means are we, you know, approaching this in a punitive way, but we're just educating and getting into dialogue, making these conversations normal and, you know, a part of the learning process uh so that kiddos feel safe, right, you know? How powerful it is to have a a kiddo, and we have many students attend this to just scan the room and be like, oh my God, there's some staff members here and they can become like their go-to, right? Uh, their go-to educators and, you know, it's always important to uh that we find every opportunity possible to have a student have a role model, someone they can go to uh at school and this is one of the many great things that came from this event is those uh interpersonal connections that were made.
Well, and at this particular event, I was, had the pleasure of uh being uh one of the folks there. And we had our students at at Burrell and Abbott, they do some community service. So we had our two-bed uh club, they presented and the kids were all excited about showing it. And you can see in some of those photographs, the parents were seeing some of the gadgets that are used to kind of target our students to lure them because they look like markers or they look like candy. So parents were, you know, um, Sametio, um, we had Officer Adel and um Officer um Carlos Surtel, they were presenting, but they were watching, like I said, make sure you, you know, they were Ziploc. Make sure we we collected all of them, so it was just really, and the kids, there were a lot of kids.
Yeah.
So it was nice, but we, you know, PTA supported, so there was pizza, it was kind of, and it was a full house, it was a full house, it was probably seventy-five people there, so that was a pretty nice event. Like, before we do that, um, we do have, it's a, an addendum or not an addendum, an exhibit, which is the attendance piece and I think, is it, is it, no, it's not here, so it's, let me see, okay, well, it's not on this, but there is an attendance piece.
It should be part of your packet, the very last page.
And we just wanted to kind of highlight that we've been really focused on working with our school sites and attendance and how we can tackle using again um data-driven in um information. We've used Tablo was the platform in addition to Aries. But all the schools that are marked in green, which if you look, it's the majority of them, have improved in their attendance. And so we've been trying to capture students at the tier one and tier two. So meaning like, as soon as you start to see that there's an issue, we we want, because we want them to have less than ten percent.
Yeah.
Um, at the last board meeting, you did hear um one of our principals just talk about how we're kind of creating these attendance champions. And so we we're continuing to build that and think about, how can we celebrate? And the schools that aren't in green, they're still looking pretty good.
They're still pretty good, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so the goal is to continue that
That momentum, yeah.
that momentum, especially with the holidays and to capture students, so, yeah, um. All right, so I guess now we're open for questions. Should I stop sharing here after?
Um, go ahead, questions?
Um, so actually earlier today, Trustee Kim and I were at a presentation um where they talked about walking school buses, like basically um and and the person who was presenting was someone um who was from Tacoma and had worked with a lot of schools of, you know, higher needs, like, you know, um, students and they, the one of and one of the reasons that they actually implemented the walking school buses was as an attendance intervention. So kind of identifying the kids who had, you know, maybe didn't have family support um getting to school and like, I mean, there's kind of multiple different models for doing it. The way that they had done it was actually um like paying the parents who were already gonna be on school campuses to like show up an hour, half an hour early to like basically, you know, shepherd these kids to school and then after school. Um, so I thought that was a really interesting um way of, like that, that was an interesting um method of an intervention and also like, you know, we've talked in the past about you know, alternative ways of getting to school that don't involve driving. Um, and I just think also like when you have, when you give kids an opportunity to move their bodies before class, like that also gets them kind of you know, in the right mindset, they're a little bit more calm and um regulated. So um I would love to kind of think about ways that we can either um you know, um, maybe empower um different sites to ident- like identify ways that we could maybe incorporate walking buses or like bike buses, right? Um, they had two adults with each group. Um, but they said like, you know, sometimes middle schoolers don't want to be seen with them, you know, and so um, as cool as they are, um, but they had, you know, they had, they had actually worked with like the local high schools to um have like staff it with high schoolers, so I don't know, I'm just thinking, you know, of some, maybe some creative ways that we could, yeah.
Absolutely.
We're open, we're open to more ideas. And I think that this is the kind of the beauty of us, like, we've been focused on it, we, now we have the data and need the data in the platform, but also looking like preventative, like if a student has had three years of missing fifty days.
Yeah.
You know, that probably is someone we want to like focus on. Um, we are, I don't know if you've heard of Abbott is doing, they have these bike um
The Ride Out.
The Ride Out, yeah.
Yes.
And they have another one that's
On Saturday.
Yeah, that's coming up and they're needing helmets.
Kind of suiting us, the helmets.
They're needing helmets, I think they're anticipating eighty
A need, huge need, wow.
Eighty students and what they're trying to do is kind of build up that knowledge of but we need bikes that needs brakes, we need bikes that um need service and we need helmets. But law enforcement, it, we're partnering with them and they're like, like, who can, so any donor, any donation bikes?
Yeah.
Um, or new helmets, we want them.
Yeah.
Um, but it's just an example of being creative and thinking, I know about it when we did our walkthrough.
Yeah.
There were a, it was a sea of bikes.
Yeah.
Right, so you see, but they're they're like motorized, so it's a little different. Um, but just seeing that creative way, so we're we're open, I'd love to
Absolutely, I'd love to learn more about that, yeah.
learn more, yeah, about the uh walking bus.
Model, yeah.
Model, yeah, that would be really great, so thank you for that, other? Items, questions?
So I had a question about the progressive discipline adventure metrics.
Yeah.
So I believe, my understanding is that over time, we've adjusted the specific items we look at, whether both between state policy and our district policy. So can you clarify, I guess, between say the twenty, the pre-pandemic and twenty-twenty-four? Are there items that, for example, disruptions that we look at differently than we did previously?
Um, so that's a great question and of course, you would give me that question. But from a legal stance, you, there's, there's been a a change, right, so we have AB, you know, uh
You know, we've gone a bit.
Okay, so I can tell you seventeen-twenty-nine, so okay, but but one of the things is that um, we can't just suspend students just based on um a disruption. We have to show that we're doing in interventions and we're trying to. But if it's disruption and, you know, something else, there there can be discipline that we can add to that. So really the focus has been, and it's an intentional focus, that we do work on how do we teach students and correct the behavior versus like, I'm gonna suspend you. There is still um ed code where teachers can suspend and they can suspend up to two days um for, you know, defiance still, because there's, that's a conflict. Sometimes when they roll out legislation, it doesn't always match um the ed code or some of our agreements within our contracts.
Looks like Superintendent wants to say some words.
Oh, okay.
Hi folks, uh, Trustee Kim, thank you for for asking that question. Um, I think, you know, having been an been an educator, um, certainly over the last two decades and seeing um what felt like for, you know, most of the two thousands and the early two thousand teens. Um, we had a, an overly punitive culture, not just policies, right? So there was a belief that punishing kids um would make others see that certain kids were punished and that that would result in the class sort of if you could think of it like the old school days, like straightening the class out if you punish one or two kids. Um, others will learn type of thing and and we know from the research that that isn't the case and and definitely our data didn't support that. So uh it's fair to say that in twenty-eighteen and in twenty-nineteen um, there were so many reasons that a student could be suspended. They could be suspended back in those days for uh roughhousing. Um, they could be suspended for it, uh, uh, an uh act could be deemed uh disruptive and a student could be suspended. Um, a simple thing of defiance um was a suspendable offense and and those things are very different now, I think, um. What we haven't done is we haven't uh ignored the behavior, we have um addressed it through counseling and restorative circles and and uh, you know, proactive strategies, even just in the classroom, things that didn't, that don't result in kids going up to the office. And that's been a really important thing for us instructionally, is to keep kids in their classrooms and to avoid um having that that separation from the learning environment. Um, while at the same time, I don't want to ignore that in each of the last two California Healthy Kids surveys, our students report feeling safer. They report fewer fights on campus, they report less drug activity on campus, they report seeing fewer weapons. They bully each other less, so all of our, our really highly valid uh metrics are proving that our, our systems to minimize punitive punishments are having the results of creating more safety, not less safety. And that's one of the big criticisms of of districts that choose to to tr- to work so hard to try to reduce punishments is there's a a belief that it will result in kids misbehaving more and kids feeling less safe. Um, and for us, our data proves the opposite.
I just had a question on the same, along the lines, so how are we ensuring that we're um, that we're not still having some bias against Hispanic and Latino kids since it does seem like they are the majority of the incidents even in the most current year?
So that's an ongoing, um, ongoing as far as some of the, looking at our data. And so we actually send out monthly data reports so that administrators are looking at them, just in case they're too busy, we're gonna generate it for you. And we do have, um, and we've been intentional about our trainings on implicit bias, we've been intentional about like what are the interventions? I think that principals have really been stronger about saying like, what, if you send out a student, what are, what are the interventions, have you reached out to the family? So that, like, how are we communicating with our families as well? Um, so we we we're just gonna continue to look at it and we're gonna continue to bring it to the table and keep keep uh equity pause when we see it. Um, I think that when there's an opportunity for services, um, we also look at that, you know, whether it's um, mental health services, whether it's just connecting students, especially some of our newcomers, like how are we knowing who they are, who's in the room? So I, I think we keep ourselves on on the data.
I think another piece too is, I'm leading the C-SACE reporting, um, which I know you've been signing a lot of those. Uh, C-SACE stands for Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services and really at the heart of of this initiative through the state and immigrant that we get is they compel us or any other district uh under the C-SACE reporting um process to really hone in on, you know, addressing the over-identification of Latino voice, right, in in our special education um uh program. Um, and so all of our efforts that we're working on, whether in some services and education service are multilingual, um, we're all kind of targeting that component, right? Like they have to include some part of their professional development, their daily support. Um, all of the data, like we disaggregate the data, it really compels us to do that, right? Um, which is really in line again with our strategic plan because that's really what we're uh we're trying to get at as well through our strategic plan and all of the goals and and strategies in there. And so I think that's one other mechanism that's important to to consider. Um, uh, because it literally spells it out, it's very intentional and very targeted and it spells it out like how to decrease that this over-identification of Latino voice, which as we all know starts with mindset. So uh a lot of uh the racial justice component um and professional development that we've geared. Um, and again, I can, you know, I can't talk about that without also making that connection to the community schools, which is also about that, right? Our initiative around uh, you know, parent education workshops, you know, it's talking to the families uh uh about um how to understand our education system and how to advocate so that they get their resources and their, and so to avoid, you know, having their kiddos being put in another track that we know is not helping and it's not, you know, the racially just thing to do. Um, and so, you know, and with the Community School Grant too, you know, brings in a lot of wraparound services and after-school uh enrichment programs so that we have healthy, just joyful kids, you know, on our campus. It's all connected, it's a great question, awesome. I would wish that comments later.
Yeah, I don't know, more questions? Um, one was, um sorry, I was trying to organize my thoughts, okay, so what about, um so there's always, I feel like there's this, like we'll see these charts and we'll see like, oh good, discipline's going down, but then we hear like the like word on the street or the sense, right, the sense on like middle school campuses that, you know, it's out of control and, you know, kids are The sense on like middle school campuses that, you know, it's out of control and, you know, kids are just so bad. And so I'm just wondering, how does that reconcile now? Are we feel, are we getting that that sense still from people that? Like even teachers and 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 other staff that's on campus um compared to the data we're seeing?
Well, well, I think that data, the importance of looking at data is to look and confirm like. You might be be, right? You might be feeling something and there's that street data where people are like, but is it really actually happening? And I think we can see that it isn't. Um, I I think that we don't, I'm not hearing a lot. I get a lot of calls.
Okay.
I'm not seeing a lot of uh families, you know, coming in with complaints. Um, that doesn't mean that we're not seeing a few of them and we are, we're gonna always be listening and we can always do better. Um, but I think that I I'm not feeling that and I think that it has to do with some of the intentional work that we're doing.
Systems in place.
I think that's right because when we did first shift to like the discipline matrix, there was this kind of like, you know, this sense that people, you know, couldn't. Discipline the kids or couldn't um like um reported or or, you know, entered into the system because it didn't fall within. Our guidelines. And so there was that kind of like, it didn't really feel like you'd have the data and it was great, but didn't have that feeling that. Things were going great. So I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah, Superintendent's got his hands there.
I would, I would say um follow the data. What, our first year coming out of the pandemic. Um, our data was not positive. Our data was actually really uh harsh. Um, our suspensions did come down and our um, you know, overall, our attempts to try to establish restorative cultures. Um, were sincere, but we didn't have enough staff or infrastructure or training. And that actually uh the analysis of that data spurred on um the creation of the restorative justice TOSA positions. And the uh two-year commitment to bring on restorative solutions to train all of our educators. Uh as well as our practitioners at a really high level. And so we, in that first year, in that twenty-two, twenty-three year, we, sorry, in that, in that twenty-one, twenty-two year. We um took the first step of reducing uh suspensions, but we didn't partner it with that second step. Of uh of um ensuring that the staff and and the team. Had the requisite knowledge base to offer alternatives that really made sense to the kids. So going into that uh twenty-three, twenty-four, uh twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We saw a big shift, a really big change because now we had systems in place to support these kids on those middle school campuses. And that's where those changes and those, in that data in terms of school safety took place. Um, and then the other thing is I really reach out to practitioners and talking to our restorative justice TOSA's. Um, and talking to the student support TOSA's and those administrators, they're really bullish um on how effective our strategies have been.
Great. Any other questions on the board?
And so I saw one of the um, one of the questions was kind of like, how do we go deeper, right? So where do we go from here in terms of um additional professional development? Or like what um what are the ways that we as a district can like keep going?
Uh, I think that data is gonna tell us, especially at the middle school. This is year two of implementation. I'm working directly with the teams in developing their implementation teams and then having them kind of. Guide their, from their school feedback. What do we need? What um walkthroughs as like qualitative and quantitative analysis of. What's working? We're doing critical protocols and where they're coming in and we're professionals, right? So like, where do we see the evidence? And that's where I I go to the rubric that we um are utilizing. To capture evidence for our restorative. Elementary is just got their um, you know, first taste. They had a virtual three hours October fourth. So our our next step is so like.
Immerse them, yeah.
Let's go to the next level uh for uh our, we have two more professional development days. Uh, we're gonna be focused on middle school with the the goal of in-person training because they've, they've communicated. They really prefer in in person, but it also costs more money. So we're also like, okay. So and then for elementary, we're gonna look at what we can offer that would also give them some more tools. Um, for the next uh January seventeenth training. Um, and so that's how we'll keep getting deeper. We'll keep getting their feedback um and.
I think another strategy is we have trainer trainers.
Yeah.
We've got within our own staff, right? We've got TOSA's who are willing to train, not just their staff, but another school staff, right? Or or a mix, right? So I think that shows a lot of like commitment and depth of of where we are with our learning.
It's it's about trust too because when you make a pivot to a different way of doing things, it's like reprogramming your brain. Right? And so I think for teachers, um it's a different way of doing it and sometimes it creates those habits. It's also modeling. My voice is getting softer, but it's also, I swear, I'm not gonna get you guys sick. Um, it's it's modeling, but it's also administrators like doing the training. If you want an RJ TOSA to be doing and and have this, you need to know what what it is. So so again, it's building the capacity of administrators so that they can also co-facilitate. I've been co-facilitating and curating the content with our professional consultants because I, it's like, it's our work. So they can bring in a lot of strategies, but it's our work and I and we need to kind of direct it while they bring in these tools and these strategies. It is our work and so for each school, it may look a little different. Um, and and we're gonna work with them, so. That's going deeper. We're gonna go deeper. Thank you trustee Kim for that question.
Um, unrelated to that.
Yes, yes.
Thank you for that. But um you mentioned yonder pouches and how, you know, positive that's been. I'm just wondering, do we offer it? Or is there a need for it at any of the elementary schools? Cause you know, it's been a middle school thing, but I don't know if we've gone down a little bit.
So I can, I can, I can respond. I know right now for elementary, we did put an offering um to like fifth grade. And again, I think that it's about them identifying it as an issue. They haven't really had a lot of issues with it. And I think if they come to us and it is an issue, we certainly will work with those schools. We strongly have heard from our middle school principals like. You need to, we need to continue it because it really is supporting kids to be engaged. And and I think all of us went to school, there were no cell phones. For some of us, or maybe not computers. But you know, yeah, we have the pager system. Yeah, so so it is helpful for students to kind of be students.
Um, are we ready for some comments now? We can. Oh, yeah, sorry.
I'm just kidding. Um, uh first, thank you very much for this presentation. Um, as I've said earlier, I'm just gonna uh repeat what I said. Uh, you know, thank goodness this district has taken the direction we have um relating to how we. Um, discipline our kids and teach our kids. Um, it's just, it's really enlightening to see the shift and the changes that um are made. Um, I quickly wanted to ask you about the bikes and the helmets. We're looking for donations. Where would we send them to?
Uh, Suzie's in the I S. Um, right now we're working with the Abbott team. So I think if we have bikes and if folks wanna bring them. Um, uh, I would say we could bring, yeah, we're gonna connect with our M and O. We're gonna connect with Suzie and M and O. I'll connect with that. Okay, Suzie Riley is is gonna be our connection.
Our connections, yeah.
Okay, if if we can just get some details.
Okay.
Size bikes, you know, um all of the accessories that are, you know, cause people may wanna send some through Amazon. Or, you know, donate unused um bike. So if you can just provide us that information, that would be great. Thank you.
Yeah, we can do that by tomorrow. Yeah.
And Samaritan House is also collecting, just so you know. So there'll, there'll be another avenue for help.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Discussion time.
So I had two comments, but before I start, I do wanna reiterate what trustee Brooks said. I think we've all discussed here how much. We really love the fact that these practices have come so far in our district. My own children in the district have benefited directly from those practices. When we do our site visits. We hear from students who come up to us who know the classroom is available, know they have this resource, know there's a safe adult that they can talk to. And that's so different than the way that we grew up. So it's just really amazing to see. Um, but there's two comments I wanted to add is, I think to uh President Proctor's point. We are still dealing with this issue where when we meet with educators, when we meet with parents, there's a lot of concern, sometimes directly that they've seen where they feel like. There's disruptive incidents that aren't being properly addressed. There's a perception that we are underreporting or, you know, trying to to create a perception that these incidents aren't happening. Um, there are a lot of parents who are just hearing about a new process in place that deviates from the kind of discipline deterrent that they're used to seeing growing up. And so at least with a lot of concern about what happens when X happens, when Y happens. We've heard a lot of misinformation, for example, that there is no progressive matrix, that basically discipline suspension is not an option. And so when we were discussing earlier about the need to communicate, I would just reiterate that. Because so many issues that happen in our district are word of mouth, group chats, parents talking to parents. Um, you know, things that happened years ago. So even the perception of what's going on each campus is still very frozen to twenty twenty-one. And even if we've seen dramatic improvements, superintendent's point, the data points elsewhere, but that's not what parents are seeing necessarily. And that's not necessarily the stories that are being shared. And so I know that we have a lot of communication needs in our district, but the more we get to see as trustees, just how much success we've had. It is frustrating sometimes that we aren't able to get our wins out there, the message out there, that these students' testimonies are not out there. And so I would really emphasize how important it is to get those out there before the narrative is painted a different way where now we're responding, reacting defensive. About the changes we've made as opposed to highlighting what tremendous progress we're seeing, understanding it'll never be perfect. And we're gonna let the data guide what we do next. But I do feel like having ownership over our storytelling is very important, especially when it comes to this type of. Culture change that is so different than what a lot of our families and also to make it multilingual in terms of outreach, to make sure that every family understands what we're doing. And is bought into this process. The second comment is one that I've mentioned before, but I I feel like it bears repeating in the current context we live in. On the anti-bullying campaign, some of Matt Pass's work uh in legal field has been about educating children about the legal repercussions. Of things like sending explicit texts, of things that, for example, whether it's pulling a fire alarm, sending a threatening text to a friend. There are laws in place that they are subject to that a lot of teenagers don't understand because in their mind, they're just messing around. Or this was just harmless, or this was just kind of a thoughtless thing they did very quickly and they don't recognize that it could have very severe legal repercussions. And I think especially when it comes to the rise of certain types of language, certain behaviors that may be emboldened in the coming months. It would be nice to get ahead of that. This was part of our anti-bullying, talk about cyberbullying, talk about other incidents. So that students are aware of how to both respond to these, but also to make sure they're not in any way engaging this behavior, thinking that it's more harmless than it is. The first one's more thank you.
Um, yeah, thanks, you know, thanks to the whole team for all the work that they do every day. Um, I definitely see it, you know, on our most, our elementary school campuses. Um, as a parent, I definitely see like more. You know, I think there's also like more understanding amongst the students of like, you know, we're all different, right? Like we might process information differently or we might need like the way that we act, react to straws might be different. Um, you know, I think there's a lot more discussion in general of narrativity than there was when we were going through school. And I think that there's also a lot more um recognition that a lot of behaviors that we see as disruptive. Or, you know, um, sometimes even disrespectful are are really offshoots of like. The different ways that we process information, the different ways that we like react or, you know, are able to regulate. Um, and it's just, I think it's just really amazing that we are, you know, kind of recognizing all of that. And and offering students different tools that might work for one, might not work for another, but just like kind of offering this menu of options. Um, and I'll just share that, you know, like I've I've seen where. Um, like the school counselor might notice that a kid is like not playing with the friends that they usually usually play with. And, you know, kind of checking in to see, is there something going on here? Um, even though it hasn't like sort of. It's like kind of exploded in any way, but just like, just having adults who care and know the kids. And like notice the kids, right? I think is really um just, you know, it's just a testament to. Um, the work that your team does. So thank you so much.
Um, okay, so I was gonna, well, thank you for all of this. This is like one of my favorite topics. Um, I was just curious and I think um at the beginning trustee Kim talked about, you know, getting feedback and um something like that. Cause I wrote his name down next to my comment, but he said something. Um, my question was, or a comment was, you know, as. I'm a parent and, you know, I've had one, I know it's hard to believe, but one, my kids have been in trouble once or twice. And um I'm thinking as a parent, if my child was in trouble and they went through this whole process that we go through now. About like restorative practices and and it's like, it's, it's very, um, it's set up in a way that even if you did something wrong. You're treated with respect and dignity. And um, you know, I'm sure that the kids like kind of appreciate this, but I wonder if we ever asked the parents, you know, how. I know this was like a, not the best experience because you're, you know, you're coming in for not the most positive reason, but how did it go for you? Like, how did you, how did, in your family afterwards, how were the conversations or how, how, you know, your child is working on these. This project to kind of repair this harm or whatever, but how is this for you? Because, you know, like we've discussed, this isn't how we all grew up. This is not how we all got in trouble. This is not how my kids who are just now in high school. This is not how they got in trouble and dealt with it. You know, they were treated very differently. And so um I just would love to hear that perspective too, just like how, how is it? I mean, it's different than what you thought or experienced. And I think this is just a very respectful way to to treat um, you know, issues that come up that may not be the most positive. So that's my comment on that. And then I was just thinking also, you know, um and trustee Trent just mentioned it. But, you know, how do we ensure that every single student has an adult on campus that they know cares about them? That it's somebody that they can, that they trust and that they can go to, um, that they're being seen, that they feel like they belong. Because, you know, um, maybe their classroom teacher is not that person because, you know, every year you may get a different personality or whatever. But how do we ensure that every single student feels that way? They leave every day saying, there's somebody on campus that loves me, cares about me and knows me. So, it's my uh.
That's our goal. That's our goal. And I think that we use data. I mean, we have the healthy kid survey. That's one of the actual questions. And that's where we respond, right? Is that, that is our goal. Every student. Every student should have at least one, at least one adult. So it is about us building relationships and building that love. That care, like that you care. Uh, we have second step curriculum. It's talking with counselors. It's getting people to have opportunities. To engage with students and to not think of, I get, again, that punishment, even if you're going in and you're restoring something. Or you're seeing your principal, you're also building that relationship. So that's our goal. And I think we have qualitative and quantitative data. And we need to keep measuring it and we need to keep that frontal. It's like when you take an equity pause and think about how are we doing? We need to take a, how are we doing with, is there a child? Do we notice something? And I think the more we trained, the more we get people to to notice when someone isn't playing, whether it's at outage. At, you know, at lunchtime, which can get really busy and it's big to some of our tiniest schools. Um, we wanna be intentional. So I think we keep it frontal.
Anything from you, trustee Brooks?
Um, just one final thought. Uh, I have two adult sons who have matriculated through the uh school district. Already and I currently have one who is in the high school district. So I just wanna say that as a parent, I deeply appreciate. This style of um discipline uh for the kids and I wouldn't call it discipline. It's restorative um practices. Um, and the fact that the high schools are also um practicing um. these uh really great tools, I have experienced them with my youngest son, so I'm really appreciative of what you guys are doing in the district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't we go back to public comment one last time and see if there's anything else to discuss? Joel, can we check with whom?
No public comments at this time.
Any final thoughts from anyone? Let me check my agenda. I don't have my computer space, so. Oh, we're ready for adjournment. Second, thank you trustee Kim for the motion and trustee Trent for the second, uh, roll call vote trustee Brooks?
Yes.
Trustee Kim?
Yes.
Trustee Trent?
Yes.
And I vote yes too, we're adjourned at six forty-one P M.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.